All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for being here tonight. Please stand for the prayer and the flag of allegiance. Pastor Steve Igers will conduct the prayer. Thank you, Steve.
Let's pray. What I do, I thank you. I thank you for your love and your grace. And I thank you for the men and women that are here that serve our village, continue to bless them, continue to give them wisdom and guidance and vision. Lord, I do want to pray for our village. I ask that you would just bless our village, give us eyesight to see, let us understand your grace, your mercy, your forgiveness, and your justice. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. All right, do we need to make a motion for the... minute agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I got it first. I don't think we're...
Is that the item? Third one on the slow speed report?
I don't think we have to vote on it tonight.
Okay. Then I'll second it. I'm voting on it tonight.
For free. I mean, you've got to attend today, so she put it in here. We have a second roll call?
Yes.
Sure.
Mallor?
Yes.
Engley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay. Today we have a couple speakers. Kathy Dahl with the Beautification Committee. Would you like to come up and address?
I just said I'm Kathy Dahl and I represent the Hicksville Beautification Committee. And I'm here to present our yearly Beautification Committee report. I thank you for having me. The HBC is under the umbrella of the Community Service Center. There are 15 members on our roster. There are about eight of us who actively care for the areas that we... two plus three noncommittee volunteers, including Pete Conner, who does a wonderful job for us at the police department. We are mostly self-supporting from the proceeds of our annual plant sale. This year's sale was a huge success because of the hard work of the committee, the volunteers, and especially the support of our community and the wonderful product we received from our vendors. We would like to recognize and commend the merchants in Chambers for their additions to the beautification of our downtown area this year and to Dawn for the great care she gives to downtown. The committee cared for 22 areas this year and did improvements to several areas, including at the park, the fairgrounds, and the flight pole area. We will have fall, Christmas, and winter decor in the planters downtown and a fresh look again next spring. We are already looking ahead for projects for the next year. One area we're talking to improve is at the grain company, and we have memorial money set aside for the trail area needs. Thank you to our community, to you, Mayor Barth, to you, Council, for your support and encouragement for us. A special thank you we want to give to Cory, to Bob, and their crew for everything they do for us. Communication may not always be the best, but we are so grateful to them. We're looking forward to continuing to serve as our community and hope we will be an asset to Hicksville. If there's ever any questions, ideas, or even criticism, please feel free to contact us. We're here for this community. Thank you.
Kathy, I have a question. How many years have you been doing this now?
Have I been doing it?
You and then the committee. I guess you tell us here.
I think the committee has gone on 20 years.
20 years.
It started with one lady. We all know Lila Whitty. She started doing this on her own and then gradually got... this is my year. But we're close to 20 years.
Well, I can't thank you enough for what you do for the community, the outreach you have to make it look more beautiful in the different areas you work at. I know you see them out in the mornings, you see them out at night watering the volunteers and at different times, all the time you put and efforts you put into everything. So I thank you for the community and praise your efforts and continued success and what we can do for you too.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Andrew Blakely.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Andrew Blakely. Hello, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Andrew Blakely, and I am here to discuss ordinance 2025-10 specifically as it relates to raising poultry. I am here to request a grandfather clause for myself and others to keep our current established flocks. Much like raising children, raising poultry comes with a whole lot of opinions, a few methods, and not a whole lot of facts. In an effort to keep this brief, I will share with you mostly facts. This village is a community in rural northwest Ohio. Like many villages, towns, and cities in the Midwest, our community is built on the support of agriculture. Those of us within city limits that are raising poultry are doing nothing more than exercising agricultural right in a farming community. I live on two lots here in the town for a total of .55 acres. I have in my flock 15 ducks, six chickens, one of which is a rooster, and two geese. Growing up in the village of Holgate, my family and I raised a flock of 37 birds. With our three-quarters of an acre of a lot, in the buggy barn we converted to a chicken coop and run, available time and resources, that was the flock we felt we could properly care for. I share this with you to show that I have a lifetime of experience to pull from when it comes to raising animals. Growing up, I learned what it means to own animals, raise pets, be self-sufficient, and do so responsibly. Before I was 10 years old, I had learned the most important lesson any child or even adult can learn from raising any animal. Animals are more than a responsibility, they are commitment. For the duration of their life, not yours, for yours is longer than theirs. Your commitment to your pet does not end because your neighbors decided that they are an inconvenience, or you yourself have decided that they are inconveniences. When you take in an animal, you accept responsibility for them and their well-being. You do not take them in just to throw them out. I purchased my flock in February of 2023, all 23 birds. I acquired each bird as a hatchling. I kept them in brooder boxes inside my own home until April of that same year, when the chickens were moved to a chicken hutch, the ducks to a pen I made out of a greenhouse frame. Later, when I obtained my geese, George and Lenny, I built a hut for the ducks and the geese and attached it to their pen. All 23 birds were raised by hand. Geese and, to some extent, both chickens and ducks as well, bond with not only each other within their flocks, but also with those who take care of them. Geese and roosters are protectors of their flocks. Countless studies have proven that they even grieve at the loss of members of their flocks and their caretakers. They are incredibly smart animals. They even learn their names, the geese do, and they will come to you as called, just like a dog. I brought these birds into my life. That was a choice that I made that was well within my rights in this village of Hicksville at that time. The birds did not choose to come here. I made that commitment to these birds to care for them for their entire life, knowing that for the chickens and ducks, on average, that is five to 10 years, and for the geese, that is 10 to 20. I feel this council is not offering a grandfather clause to those of us with established flocks, has not taken into consideration what it means to raise animals. This council does not seem to have considered that these animals bond with us just as we bond with them. All birds molt. Moltin can be observed in poultry at changes of the season, developmental milestone, or when they suffer from an extreme amount of stress. One of the most stressful things poultry can go through in their life is rehoming, especially in the winter season. Winter on its own can be stressful for a bird, especially if they find themselves in a new environment. Rehoming for poultry... moltin in the winter can be a death sentence for poultry. When a bird molts, it uses its reserves of energy, the same reserves used to stay warm in the winter, to shed their feathers, their number-one defense against the cold. This council has chosen a deadline in the heart of winter for rehoming our flocks. I have had my pet chickens, ducks, and geese here in the rural village since February of 2023. I have received zero complaints, and to my knowledge, none have been made about me or my flock. Not once have I had a bird escape its enclosure. Friday, October 17th, my wife made a post on Facebook looking for the support of the community. By the request of residents, she set up a nonofficial petition so that members of the community could sign something in order to show their support for us. The poultry-raising members of the community and our pets are fellow friends. In less than 72 hours, we obtained over 100 signatures. We have also acquired a few letters of support from our neighbors and fellow poultry owners. I have copies of those that I can hand out to the council, and there are two that I will read. First is from my immediate neighbor, to whom it may concern. I am writing in regards to my neighbor's ducks and chickens. I have lived next to Liz and Andrew for three years. Their animals have never been a nuisance to me or my family. The ducks and chickens are enclosed and are not roaming free. Liz and Andrew have spent a lot of time and money putting together enclosures. They take very good care of them and keep everything clean. I have never, ever smelled them. I sit outside almost daily, and the noise is not a nuisance. On the other hand, the only nuisance is another neighbor's dog that barks constantly. I have a lot of family get-togethers and friends over, and there has never been mention of the neighbor's chickens or ducks being bothersome. I think the neighbors should be allowed to keep them. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. The second letter I'll read is from a coworker of mine who lives here in Hicksville and aids her neighbor in taking care of their poultry so that they can go on vacations. To whom it may concern, I am here to talk about why my neighbors and all members of this village should absolutely be allowed to keep their chickens and ducks. My neighbors keep them contained and well taken care of without them ever being a nuisance to the neighborhood. These birds aren't just pets, they are a way of life, providing fresh eggs, natural pest control, and a connection to sustainable living that benefits our whole community. The coops are well-maintained, clean, and tucked away on their property, causing no disturbances to anyone. They are responsible caretakers, ensuring the animals are healthy and set up meets all local standards. When my neighbors are on vacation, I happily go to their home and help take care of the birds, making sure they are always well cared for. Banning their flock would not only strip away their right to responsibly use their land, but also dim the charm of our neighborhood's rural spirit. Let's support them in keeping these birds. They are harming no one and adding value to our shared community. I, for one, would be upset to no longer see these animals and to see us get further away from a self-sustaining heritage. As I end my statement here tonight, I hope you all take to heart these simple facts. Just as the caretakers bond with these animals, these animals bond with their caretakers. Rehoming poultry in the winter can be a death sentence. I am one man who, with the support of his wife, in less than a week, less than a fraction of the time it has taken this council to approve for a final reading of this ordinance, has gained the support of over 100 members of this community. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Blakely. I appreciate your... Did anybody have any questions?
I would like to see all the letters of support.
Yes, absolutely. I have copies for all council members.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I had a nice conversation with them a couple days ago on the phone.
Which I am comparatively grateful for.
Coming by the dogs.
Yeah, I love...
I got five at my house.
Thank you.
My point was to avoid bringing other issues into this.
Yeah. I'll take your copies.
What part of town do you live in?
I live just on the road from Nemco. I'm four lots down from the Viaduct.
I don't think I've... I've never heard his name before. I told you on the phone, I've never heard, I never knew he had anything.
I never heard of him.
If I could speak a little bit, you know, we've been talking about this for a long time, and I don't believe we've had a lot of complaints. We have a couple here and there, you know, kind of thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, Officer France... Oh, picking you on the spot, I'm not, but I don't think we've had a lot of complaints. Our thing we've been kicking around for quite some time is numbers, types of animals, that kind of thing. So it's not saying we're not allowing certain things, you know, but we're thinking of numbers and things of that nature, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, and council's been mulling this over for quite some time. But I do... well-written, well-written, my statement. I appreciate that, so...
Andrew, I appreciate your passion for birds. I'm very passionate about bees, so I get this. I'm curious, is there an appropriate number for amount of space?
There is. It depends on what type of bird you have, but I think the general consensus is that you have one square foot per pound of bird.
I have a question. Who does that young man belong to right there?
Him.
Yeah. You've done a fine job raising him. From the flag of allegiance, I heard his voice over all of us adults. And every time that we applaud somebody's actions, he stands up and he's gone. That boy's on the right road.
He's very passionate.
And we usually ask this. I don't usually ask this, but I would assume everybody here is in support of the chickens tonight, right?
Yes.
All right. Across the board.
I swear all animals, not just chickens.
That is one statement I forgot to make, is I spoke specifically in regards to poultry. I do not have the experience to stand there and speak to you about hoofed animals or rabbits, but I do believe that that is a right that should be protected as well.
Is this to do with rabbits also? Will this code or whatever deal with rabbits too?
Yeah, we added that in for 4-H members.
Huh?
We added that in for 4-H members, so if they wanted to raise a rabbit for 4-H, it would be able to do within the village limits.
What if they are not raised for 4-H? I have three children that have rabbits, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. Are you breeding them and selling them?
No, absolutely not. They're just their pets.
Okay.
That's it.
Why does selling it matter?
Because it becomes a business, and then it causes more liability on the town.
But then you applied for a business.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the USDA would regulate that. Charlie was wondering how many rabbits you currently have?
I only have three.
You would be within the new ordinance.
What's the new ordinance for chickens and ducks?
As it's currently written, it's maximum of six, but we may be relooking at that.
When will we know this is in effect?
Well, I'm not going to vote for it tonight.
Partially. Portions of it are already in effect, have been in effect for a long time. The fact of no roosters and a few other things, that's been on the books.
It's never been in stone, because I know, we talked to the zoning officer that used to be the zoning officer, Mike Bailey, and he said, as that was to me, five years ago before we had our house fire in '21, he said, "You can have a chicken, you can have a cow, you can have a horse, you can have any farm animal you want on our town," for instance, as long as it was 100 feet away from a building. So a rooster, we didn't have any. And I even, we've even looked through the ordinance, says nothing about a rooster. I would understand. A rooster is very loud. I understand that, I do, for being an owner of having animals, chickens. I understand that. A rooster is very loud, but ordinance is six chickens? I think that's a little harsh. What if you have this family of five, like I do? My kids eat six eggs once in the morning. I'm out of chick eggs within one day. That's not fair to my other two children, or my husband, or I. I really don't agree with that. I will say that. I could say maybe 24, that would be okay, because that's a dozen, you know, two dozen of eggs. Most families go through that within a day, roughly, if you have children. That love eggs, at least. My kids do. They live off of eggs. If they could, they would live off of eggs. That's my only complaint. The other thing, I agree. I would, I mean, if we didn't want ducks and that, I'd understand that also. I'd rather keep my ducks, but that's my opinion, I'm sorry.
Like I said, I know you're all passionate about your animals, and you take care of them. They're part of your family, part of your structure of life in the community and everything. And you kind of came up with, we started getting, you know, you have two, you have 10, you have 30, you have 40, you know. Was it too many, not enough, kind of thing? And I think we thought, we put some limits on some of this stuff, you know. We didn't have any limits. Like you said, I never knew we could have a cow and horse in town 100 feet away from it. I always thought we could.
Right.
I've lived here 33 years, so...
I never would have thought that either.
I don't think it would.
Myself. I wouldn't want a cow in my yard next to me either. I mean, I understand that.
I know, but they've talked about this back and forth. So I know we're going to talk about it some more if we can and come to a conclusion of, like I said, we've heard your, you know, letters of support and your time you've got invested in coming with the petition and everything, so I know council will take that into consideration.
Now, if this ordinance does follow in, my question is, how many fines, like how much are our fines and all that crap going to be for us?
And is there a time limit for when we are allowed to rehome? Because that was our issue this week. We were planning with someone, we've been talking for a couple of weeks with Cody Sanders, trying to, because he has lots of chickens outside, and working with him to rehome it. It takes a little bit, because as he was saying, they had to set up an acclimation point to keep those birds separate from the birds that they already have. They had to build that space for us. They had to come to our house and get it. And less than four days, our neighbors were complaining again, which is fine. We were within, it was a little, our coop had gotten moved, it was too close to their house. That's fine. The plan was to move them, and then we got told we needed to rehome them completely. We had no time, four days to do that before we were being summoned to court about it. And thankfully, we've spoken with you guys and talked about everything we need to do about that. But for future, you know, that, it takes longer than just a little bit of time to rehome any amount of chickens, and that seems like to be a big problem. On the other end of that, where they used to be in our yard, they were 100 feet away from a neighbor. The other neighbor, she is totally fine with us having chickens, even if they are within the 100 feet. Are there stipulations where we can get people to sign contracts with us within this community to say, like, "We don't mind that distance." Like, if it is a little close to our house, like, we give eggs to people in our community, like, they're benefiting from these things too. We want to know if we can work with those people to make stipulations, like, "No, they don't care that it's 75 feet instead of 100. We have a contract." Is there ways we can write that up? I just thought that would be... Thank you.
I'm sure that gets tricky when land gets sold, right?
I would assume.
Yeah, that would be my only fear with doing that, is land gets sold. I don't know. I mean, that would be my question.
Would they ask for a variance, and then, but if that property owner moves, they'll say it's still there, and then you'd have to ask the new owners if it was okay. They might not like that.
And I think that's, I mean, I don't think that would be...
And then you rehome and...
And then you rehome, yeah, and then you have your time limit to rehome, and then you...
I go.
I mean, I don't think that would be a big issue, especially with the way this community, we talk to so many, I mean, everybody that moves here, we try to, like, introduce ourselves, we try to, everybody's very communicative, it seems like.
Right. Probably community. Good. Like I said, I know they have to talk about some things, and it is in here, but with your presence, I can't say what council's going to do.
Right.
But I think they need to take some more looks at what this ordinance establishes and how it's addressed, so...
I do have a question. What happens? This happened to me, and this is why I'm asking. There are chickens come over into our yard. I have two big dogs, 80-pounder and 105-pounder. They didn't kill them, but one of them rolled around pretty good. What happens if my dogs would kill the chickens on my property? I want to know what gets done then.
Garrett?
Fried up fast.
Because I'll tell you right now, there ain't nobody in here that'll take my dogs away from me because they were on my property.
Garrett, do you have any, because some of this falls under Ohio Revised Code, right? So if the chickens were to get loose, that's not an ordinance issue. That then becomes a misdemeanor. Am I correct? Did I say that?
That could be like a chicken at large, basically, animal at large, because you have to keep it on your property like you do a dog.
So it wouldn't be your fault if your dog ate that chicken? That's that owner's problem, not yours.
I...
I mean, I'm a chicken owner now, so I mean, if your dog got my chicken, I'm honestly, that's fair game to your dog, I mean.
I do know that they did apologize to my wife. I just want to know what happens.
Thank you. And we took complete responsibility for that. We never, if they get out, that is completely on us. We own them. That is our pin problem. We will fix whatever we need to fix.
Like, is there, do you think you've got an answer on that in a way?
My other question is, like, so when we do do this, and it comes into thing, grandfather, people that already have animals, are we going to be protected because we are grandfathered in? Woo! Grandfathered in, or...
Currently, as it's written, no.
Are we going to have to absolutely get rid of our animals, like, right then and after? I'm forgetting about your ears there. That's only my question.
For council, I don't see anybody wants that dress out, but we don't know, I can't tell you which way this is going to go tonight.
I'll say the ordinance was too vague, and I voted no in the first place. It was too vague, and I asked that question about being grandfathered, and the date that they had put in the ordinance was January 1st, give people till the 1st of the year. But this has been going on for a year. So they were trying to give, I think initially, maybe I was speaking here, but trying to give people six months to have time to be able to relocate animals, but nothing's ever was in here saying grandfathered, or, you know, pets, or anything else. I voted no for that reason, not having enough, it was too vague.
Why is this preemptively being done? Is there an anticipation of there being issues? Why are ordinances like this even being brought up unless there's either a complaint or there's anticipation of complaints and problems? What is the reason that this isn't even being...
There have been complaints.
There's been complaints on some people, but I'll tell you one thing, I've never, I told you on the phone, I've never heard his name or his address, anything at all.
I just heard the mayor speak that there was very few, if any. I just heard him say that he did not know...
Very few means there have been some.
That's true.
So, on the same aspect, are we going to get rid of dogs? Because you've just said that you have complaints of dogs.
I mean...
We're not going to do that. Are we going to get rid of...
Do you want to license every one of your chickens?
I would. I personally would. I am dead serious. I would personally license all 30 of my...
As a member of a rural...
Dogs and cats, so dogs and cats are in any part of the conversation.
But it is, it's an animal. It's an animal that we own.
They're causing more complaints in this town than anything else, and we're making ordinance about things that aren't getting complaints, that has many complaints, so that doesn't make sense.
Cats are in that.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense to us.
As I was trying to say before I got cut off multiple times, and everyone has the right to speak, but the way the ordinance is written, dogs and cats are excluded from it, so you can currently have as many dogs and cats as you want.
We made an Ohio Revised Code, so that falls outside of ordinance as well. Like, there's...
You still don't have a license for the dogs.
Yes, there's, that's a whole, that's a law. Right, it has nothing to do with that.
But we were not addressing that. You were. I'm saying...
They brought up about you were, were gonna take away the number of dogs you could have, correct? Or would...
You're, you're avoiding the entire...
You're okay. You can keep talking. We're here to discuss. It's not, this is not an argument.
I think preemptively doing this for no reason at all doesn't make any logical sense.
So let me ask you a question. Let's pretend like I had a cow in my backyard and that cow got out and somebody ran into that cow and died in the road. Do you think that's an issue or not?
That's what we were talking about, animals. That's what we were talking about chickens.
No, we're talking about the ordinance.
An animal at large is an animal at large.
A horse, anything like that. Then the village limits, I don't think is a safe thing. Now poultry, I'm not so worried about. Rabbits, I'm not so worried about.
Okay, so if you own a dog and the dog gets, and the dog gets out, gets in the road and causes a motor vehicle accident, that's on the fault of the dog owner for not maintaining. It would be the same as with any other chicken.
But you're talking about a hundred-pound dog versus a thousand-pound cow?
How about a, how about a hundred-pound goat? That is a hooked animal.
I think we're kind of wandering away from where we're headed.
So my, I think my husband's question is, we're, we're...
Preemptively.
What, what's the motivation? We already have nuisance ordinances on the books. So if there's nuisances, there's, the zoning administrator, I believe, is, is in charge of handling those nuisances. What, what, what's the motivation now? Um, especially, we have the, the six animal limits confined down to poultry and rabbits. Um, what, I guess, what was the, what was the motivation behind making this amendment? When, when we have a, we have ordinance on the books that council even admits is not being enforced. So why are we making a new one that's cloudy, convoluted, concerning? I just, I think that's the general question.
I think to me, with the, with the more hooked animals, the more country animals, right? I'm just saying, the horses, the goats, the sheep, things like that. Whereas chickens, people are doing the eggs, the poultry, that kind of thing. Rabbits, you know, they're easy to maintain, house and take care of. Where you start getting into horses, you want, you got a pen in your backyard and a ten-by-ten square foot.
So you see that becoming...
I'm just saying, I'm just speaking, I'm not speaking for council. All right, I've lived in this town thirty-three years. We have to set a limit because things are... I always thought, I told you before we started, I always thought we could never have horse or cows or goats in this town, right? Uh, but we have to set a limit because we're starting to get more poultry operation. You know, people wanting the animals. And some are, well, taking care of and maintaining. It gets to a point where you have ten, now you have fifteen, now you have thirty, now you have fifty, right? Um, is it, is it too many? We get to a point where we can, we allow it, but do we have to set a limit? Uh, when you start getting that many animals, you will get a smell, right? Uh, circumvent, I guess, uh, within people's yards and maintaining them and everything, so...
And I think also coming into this late, because I'm part of, one of the ones that worked on it, is the ordinance as it is written is very vague. There's no stipulation of, you can have anything except, as long as it's not within a hundred feet. So that's where some of the specifications come from. As for the number of things like that, I did some research, our administrator, our zoning officer, with other municipality ordinances, trying to mirror and see what those ones did. How we landed on six, that's just kind of where it landed because like the mayor said, where do we stop? Ten, twenty, thirty, and then it gets out of there. Um, so that's just where as, I'm one of those runs that worked on writing it came from. It was research of other municipalities. And it was just very vague as it was written to begin with.
Other municipalities in the state, a lot of them have it where your chicken coops can just be ten feet from a neighboring property. Um, that was not brought, um, the distance wasn't changed or anything. So you're changing some things, but not mirroring full...
A hundred feet from another dwelling, dwelling, pretty consistent across the board.
We, we are a pretty lenient town when it comes to this. Uh, I know Brian's got some information, like Archibald and Delta, even Antwerp, not supposed to have anything, period. You know, some towns, they allow you to have it, but you have to change your zoning to agriculture. And what's the odds that's gonna happen?
What did Holgate do? You said Holgate put an ordinance in place then?
Uh, Holgate actually put an ordinance in place to remove all poultry from within city limits. Um, but the blind eye was turned to the council members that still maintain blocks within the village limits.
Does that block? Sounds too much.
And I think, I would like to have chickens any day pinned up next to me than five, six, seven cats coming over and digging up the grass and pooping in my yard. That's just my statement.
I, I, I'm gonna ask this question, so like to raise on the whole cat thing because this has been a very big issue. Okay, we're sitting on chickens, farm animals, which I understand, you know, there has to be a limit somewhere. I understand that. Why are we not doing a limit on these cats? Why are we not doing something? I literally had to call an officer out at my house because a cat was literally dying in my yard. And I'm gonna assume it had, um, what's that called? They get, they die, I think it was called?
Rabies, parvo.
Parvo. We assumed it had parvo. The officer had, took it away from my house because it was going to die. My three children literally saw it barely breathing and took it away. I mean, when's enough for these cats? I'm gonna ask that the question. I know this is off the subject of the chickens, but when is that gonna be enough?
I will say for the cats, there are so many strays in town.
Exactly.
That there's not, I mean, I'm not saying that they're not kept in houses, but I know, uh, Lakey, she's passed away, look down the roads from us. She fed all the cats. And you've seen cats walk, and you know the house I'm talking about.
I know exactly what I'm talking about.
People are pretty much like, when she passed away, they start, other people start putting food out because they felt bad for the cats.
Yes.
They're, I mean, they're not my cats, they're not their cats, but there's almost like your block's cats, you know?
I know, and like, I mean, they even go underneath our house.
But there's no owner.
No, there's no owner. And if you, if you call and say and let someone else know in town, hey, you know, just letting you know that, be careful with your cats just in case that, you know, this parvo cat is going to get your cats. Oh, you were the bad guy because you didn't call them first to see if it was their cat. And it's like, at a point in time, where is enough is enough with the cats? I literally have multiple lines through my yard of cat tracks that is ridiculous. I want to put stuff out to kill them because it is that bad. My front porch reeks of cat pee. My back door, brand-new door, five years lived there, been back to my house, smells of cat pee. Underneath my brand-new house smells of cat pee. It is ridiculous.
I mean, that's where we could look into some cities and towns have trap neuter release programs where you trap these feral cats, get them fixed, and then you can release them again so then they don't keep reproducing. But we can't really put a limit on feral cats.
Corey. I think too, they might try to look into the cats and dogs down the road. But they get so much pushback trying to get ordinance that's never been enforced for how many years. We're getting blowback, pushback. So you come to a point, we never enforced that. Well, you got to go when the administration wants to enforce things. Is it always gonna be right? No. Can we adjust? Yes, but we've got to start somewhere. And not always say, well, it's never enforced. That's what I, in a short time I've been here, well, I've never enforced it. We gotta start somewhere because I grew up here and I know half the in courts have never enforced.
Right.
Or we won't have the area we have down in my old hometown, or my home area. So like, this ordinance that we have is the Ohio Revised Code. It's been on our books since nineteen eighty-two. Now, if tomorrow, if Officer Franz and Brian went out around town tomorrow, I can guarantee you if I come back with about fifteen to twenty court summonses for people who are in violation of our current ordinance. So, you know, do we want to start enforcing it now? Or do we want to, you know, make some changes to this ordinance before we start enforcing it? That's the thing. You know, because there is, is people who are taking care of them, but they are in violation of our current ordinance of the hundred-foot distance. We know this. But is it an issue? Yes and no. Neighbors aren't complaining. I, I, I receive phone calls.
Jesus!
Not every day. I don't receive phone calls every day, but I do receive calls and complaints about people's chickens. All I can do is send an officer out. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna go out and inspect it, you know, that Brian can do it or an officer can do it. But, you know, but to flip things, you know, like you brought up about the cats. We've talked about that a few years ago and talking about trapping a cat. But then it's on the homeowner to trap it, it's on the homeowner to pay for it, to have it spayed or neutered, and you release it back onto your property.
But if you trapped the cat and the cat has kittens, you just broke the law.
And it's like, who really wants to do that? I don't. As a homeowner, I don't want to have the responsibility paying for all these cats. It's a, it's a, it's a really tough situation.
So, okay. Well, again, we've talked about this. We've had your input. We appreciate it. And like I said, council has to make a decision and take a look at things. So I'm sure they will do that. You know, it's addressed on that?
Thank you very much for coming and letting us know your feelings. Thank you for your address.
Um, next on the agenda, we have the approval of the bills. What's that? I didn't hear roll call, did I? Did I? Jump right in the meeting. Roll call.
Here.
Beverly.
Yes, ma'am.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eggly. Here. And Bailey is up.
Yeah. Council, um, approval of the minutes from October sixth. Make most two approvals already.
Okay.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Abstain.
Beverly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Eggly. Abstain.
Approval of bills, what's, senior packets?
Did you print out those new ones that you sent today?
Is the, uh, the Grande project completed?
Yes.
That's the final?
That's fine. One deal.
Yeah.
Everybody looked.
I'll make most approve the bills. Second.
Roll call.
Eggly. Yes. Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
All right, I don't believe any boards or commissions have met. We're going into committee reports. I think we have a financial committee meeting.
It wasn't in my desk. Definitely was via email. It was like, whoever gave you...
I didn't, you didn't read it for me.
Yeah.
I have the email. I can send you the printout. I read it.
The finance meeting had been asked or thing.
So we have copies of some working out. So, uh, we have the administrator's report.
Uh, just a little bit. Today, we started annual curicide leaf pickup. And as of now, we're planning on running it, uh, through November twenty-first. Recycle lot will officially close on November twenty-ninth. So if residents have any brush material or leaves, grass, anything like that laying around, they can get it down there before the twenty-ninth. Uh, in December, we will have a company come in to grind up all the brush down there, get it all hauled out. That'll give us a winter month to take the lot cleaned up and ready for spring for everybody. Elm Street was paved today. There's still some, some cleanup and yard restoration and seeding work that remains to be done. That'll be done here real soon. And then tomorrow morning, uh, Oak Street from Handle Lane area to Divine Avenue will officially be paved. And that will not start until after school's in session, uh, so we can minimize any traffic disruptions in that area.
Thank you, Corey. Any questions for Corey? Okay. Avery, up, list your report.
So the first one we have is the final reading of ordinance amending section five oh five on three of the Hicksville Codified Ordnances pertaining to keeping the animals in your dwellings. I don't know how much money we need to dwell on.
Let's pass on it.
Yeah.
Table, please. Anybody else agree on the table?
We can talk about things more.
I've got like four things to get to look at, so... Sir, when you get, I get like contact numbers for you.
Yeah, absolutely.
But they just decided on this ordinance, instead of making them, they're gonna look, like I said, they're gonna look into it, look at some of the parameters of the ordinance and make a decision later in regards to it, so... You guys want a mayor's number six one six one, Corey? And call center offices if it's gonna come back around or get some input. I mean, if you want to, you know, have some discussion, we're here to listen to people when you came tonight, and that's what we did, so, um, you know, our phone numbers, offices are open for that reason. Andrew called me. I appreciate that. And thank you to a couple council people. So, uh, it's gonna be a table and we'll readdress it.
Mr. Mayor, if the ordinance gets rewritten and some things changes, does that mean you have to have three more meetings again or... Unless it's in a program.
Unless we need to have more interesting.
So, good.
Next one, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five fourteen. Uh, an ordinance amending section nine twenty-five oh one of Hicksville Codified Ordnances pertaining to backflow prevention. I spoke before about this. I believe we're no longer in compliance with the EPA and that's why we have to rewrite this one.
Yeah, backflow prevention that we had for our ordinance was the same since nineteen ninety-four. And all the way back to nineteen ninety-four, the EPA was okay with it. They came and did their evaluation. That's what Bridget found, uh, was a violation, was our ordinance. There was some verbiage that she wanted to add to it. And then, so we started looking around online and, uh, got the, all the Ohio Revised Code verbiage that she wanted. So I feel we're adopting here, which will get us on a, what was called a verbiage violation with EPA.
You want to suspend the rules on that? I'm going to suspend the rules.
No, first, and by second.
Second.
Roll call.
Well, one quick question. Do you have that listed in there, like how often do you need inspector reports on the backflows?
I think it's, I thought it was every year. Yeah, I believe it's every year.
Every year.
Yeah, well, I, I send you all my reports every year from school. I just...
Yes, I get, I get quite a few of them.
Okay.
Yeah, they all go into the file to whatever business it is.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eggly. Yes.
Next, we have first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five fifteen, and ordinance authorizing the village administration to re-record.
Yeah.
Second and final time. So we're still on the backflow one. So second reading ordinance amending section nine twenty-five oh one of Hicksville Codified Ordnances pertaining to backflow prevention.
Can you tell me where shows need to be done yearly? Because I see need to have inspections and tests made by the, required by the superintendent. Uh, section B in the very last sentence. You gotta pay for the backflow inspections, you know, because yearly, that's one thing. But a superintendent says, hey, we need one, we need one, we need another one six months later. They go yearly. They don't go by like fiscal year. They go by the year that it was installed. And then a year from there, you're gonna have it done again.
But if you're saying to prevent somebody from telling you, you know...
Yeah, like, hey, I don't, I need a...
They can still do that.
But I know I received, obviously, the backflow reports every year. And I know Bridget has looked over this one and this one's been a hundred percent approved by the EPA. Yes?
Second.
Roll call.
I don't know if it matters, but you said second reading. You'll have to say second and final reading, so that's the three reads.
Do you know if it matters?
I think yes.
Anyway. Bassett.
Yes.
Eggly. Yes. Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Um, fifteen, unless they want to have any discussion beforehand.
No discussion, we're here.
We have some questions.
Oh, big time.
And if you're going to put it off to another day, it has to be this week.
Oh, yeah. Wait until Bailey got back again on the twenty-first, so all the councilors...
All right, then we can skip it.
Okay.
But y'all have it.
Give it to them. Give them a little, yeah. Okay.
Let's hit on the ordinances. Fire chief is not here. Police chief. Oh, yeah.
I have a police chief. I have a fire chief.
Good. Good.
He has four vendors set up to, he's going to have a spec team to choose the new fire truck. That's it.
Who's gonna be on the team?
He didn't tell me.
Should one of us? Should one of us be on that team?
Was that part of the grant?
Yeah.
Should have inspected out the grant on what they have to get?
Shouldn't.
Just that it's a, that.
A twin?
Yeah.
With a certain letter, trip 75.
All of the stuff that's on it that the firemen use, and it's like two trucks in one, they get to choose what they need and.
Within reason, right?
Yeah.
Probably be there.
I could talk to Derek, maybe having one of the fire EMS committee people involved in that, I don't know, they have to make a decision. Another fireman, so I'll talk to Derek, he'll be informed. Yep. No park tonight, and Chief Denning's not here, and then, like I said, Cruz is not here tonight, so. No director's reports on that, and fiscal, yes.
We still have choice ones here for their presentation.
Oh, that's right, yep, yep. You want to do that now, or wait till after the fiscal report?
Get you home for a dart.
I will say, before we get started, you, the last meeting before we approved everything, exactly what we didn't want to happen, all three concepts are exactly what we didn't want to happen.
Well.
So I, I mean, just telling you.
No, no, that's fine, and good evening, Mayor and Council, thanks for having us back. Last time I was here, it was upon the request of Cory. Choice One Engineering does do a handful of projects with the, with the village. We do a lot of utility work, working on the Defiance Avenue pump station currently. Did the waterline project along Elm Street, so we're familiar with the area. And in conversation with Cory, you know, we express our, our interest in helping the village to help develop the downtown. Help bring, you know, bring commerce back in, well, not back in too, but help, help build a corridor throughout downtown area. I brought Mike G here with me tonight, he is our traffic and funding specialist, so he'll be able to paint a better picture than what I did last time. But I did take to heart your, your guys' said, build parallel parking, one of our concepts has parallel parking, but. As, as I, I believe I've mentioned, we can, we're gonna throw a couple options out to you guys, just to paint the picture, so that you guys can see what type of options are out there. And then we can start focusing in on, on a specific design when we go after, after the funding sources. Mike, you wanna?
Yeah, so like Jim said, we got three alternatives to kind of propose to the village tonight, and knowing that, they can all change. So they can all change in layout, and they can change in scope. So I'll just lay that out there first, but what we really took to heart when we were looking at this was, you know, improving traffic safety. So the three things we want to get through the council tonight is to show you guys all the concepts. Kind of provide like an overview of the potential funding that exists, and gather your input to see if you want to go after any funding. So what were the project goals when we laid this out? One is vehicular and pedestrian safety, doing what we can to enhance that in the corridor. And then as kind of an alternative, like a number two is, you know, making aesthetic changes to the corridor as the village sees fit. So why this corridor? Plenty of locations throughout the village that we could have looked at. High, the High Street corridor between Main and Maple is on the ODOT's 2025 Highway Safety Improvement Program Priority Safety List. So it's ranked number 396 out of 500. So I know you're already thinking, okay, relative, that seems kind of low on the list. You gotta think about all of the segments and intersections that exist throughout the state. And this happens to be on that list, so. Most of these kind of projects are, are like, these segments are in more urban areas, you know, your Columbus, your Cleveland, your Dayton's, your bigger cities. In particular, the intersection of High and Main is ranked 488 on the intersection list out of that 500. So we have two, you know, you have the whole corridor itself, and then the intersection of High and, and Main, that's on these lists. So immediately, this puts it as a priority for potential funding because of the safety concerns that are happening out there. It ends up on this list because of the frequency of crashes and the severity of crashes in the corridor. So we didn't do like a full study, but we did pull some traffic data, some crash data, what's available online to help, you know, paint a picture of what's going on out there. So we look at the intersection of High and Main over a five-year period, so from 2020 to 2024. There were 27 crashes, so a little over five per year, with a 25% injury rate. 37% of those 27 crashes were backing crashes. That for an intersection is a lot higher than what we would suspect. Typically, when we look at a signalized intersection in like a downtown area, you know, we would expect to see like rear ends, maybe some angles, some left turn. Backing isn't typically one that we would see up that high.
I got a quick question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you noticed numbers being down since subways don't over there? I mean, that's, normally it was a very busy corner, and having a business that burned down and had a lot less traffic, has that number, I mean, is that number skewed at all?
Yeah, I mean, that's the good feedback that we like to hear, because, you know, there's things that are specific to the village.
I don't know of any, but maybe.
Almost two years ago, it's burnt down, and that was a very busy intersection with track cars. It was bad parking in front of subways, people were always darting in and out.
Got it, yep, we can take a closer look at it, but that's the kind of feedback we need, you know, sometimes there's detours that change the way traffic patterns are that sometimes, sometimes can impact these crashes. I can't say that I recall seeing like, you know, a steep drop off in crashes, but. 27 crashes, five a year, that, a lot of times, if we're starting to see like three or more crashes at an intersection, it's getting brought to somebody's attention. Especially in a, in a setting that, you know, we're, we're not looking at, you know, really high traffic volumes, you know, we're not in a super urban area. So that's High and Main, and yes, feel free to ask questions as we go. High and Maple, there's 13 crashes at that intersection, so a few less, but there's a 30% injury rate, so we're seeing a little bit higher injury rate at that intersection. Some of that can probably be contributed to just, it's kind of an odd layout down there, just the way the pavement is. And there were 38% angle crashes, and then 15% bicycle, so you had two like pedestrian-related crashes that occurred at that intersection. So once again, you got kind of an interesting scenario where you have angle crashes being the highest. Crash type, which is a little bit unusual. So both intersections have some crash things going on. We did come out and took some traffic counts, tried to get a better understanding of what the traffic count data looks like, and. When we looked at that, the intersection of Main Street and High, we looked at the signal warrants. So we're, we're looking to see, is this signal warranted based on the traffic volumes that exist? So we look, there are eight different traffic warrants, typically, we only look at three of them, so warrant one, two, and three. Warrant one is looking over the course of eight hours of the day. Does the, the amount of traffic that goes through that intersection, does it meet thresholds to say a traffic signal should be considered here? And then we have a four-hour warrant, which we look at a few less hours, but those thresholds go up ever so slightly, and look at the same thing, and then a peak hour warrant, so that's one, three. So a peak hour warrant could get in that somewhere, say like if you have a school or an industrial facility, you know, you have a lot of traffic that all leaves at once. Sometimes that is enough to push a signal to get warranted. So when we looked at the intersection of Main, it meets warrants two and three. Basically, what that means is the signal is warranted, and if the village were to pursue funding, a signal could remain at that location if it is, you know, desired or determined to be the appropriate traffic control device. And the funding would, would allow for that to stay. Now, when we get down to the intersection of Maple, it doesn't actually meet signal warrants, so. If we were to go after any sort of ODOT or federal funds, a signal could not be part of that project. What we would likely recommend looking at is maybe look at doing a four-way stop, which if we make some modifications to the layout of that intersection, I think a four-way stop would operate completely fine there. But that's one thing, you know, just another thing that we have to evaluate and that you need to know about. The one exception being the concept three, which we'll get to later, a signal would have to remain in that option just because of the, the traffic pattern proposed at that intersection. So just looking at the existing corridor, just some real high-level stuff, I know we're not gonna remember all these numbers. They got 17 feet of sidewalk on either side, and there are 82 parking stalls through the corridor, six of those being accessible. So 82 is the number to remember, and I'll flip back and forth to that, so we all know. The one really nice thing about this downtown corridor is it is a really wide corridor, so from a design perspective, that gives the village lots of options of what to look at, and that's why I'm saying lots of these things can change, because we have a lot of room to work with. So looking at concept number one. Concept number one proposes.
If you guys have seen it, I'm gonna show it to you behind us real quick.
With this concept, we have, basically, I guess, the big number that I think is gonna be important here is the, the number of parking stalls. So we have 79 stalls, and we're proposing reverse angle parking. The reverse angle parking, I know that, you know, it's not something that you see very often. But where the benefit of the reverse angle parking comes in is when you park and you pull out, you have a very clear line of sight of where other vehicles are, where pedestrians are. So these backing crashes that we're seeing in the crash data, this is an opportunity that corrects that issue that exists. Another benefit of reverse angle parking, say you have a family, they come in, they back their vehicle in, you open your doors to get out, say your kids get out. There's a door in the way blocking their ability to get to the roadway, right? So you open that door, the, the child really has one option, and that is to venture back towards the sidewalk where we want that pedestrian. So there's, there's a good safety benefit from the reverse angle at that. And then lastly, just in general, when you have a, a retail area in a downtown corridor, the reverse angle is a nice opportunity if you're out, you're shopping, you have a stroller, you buy goods, loading your car. Your car, when you load your car, you're on the sidewalk, you're protected from traffic, you're not out in traffic as you're trying to load your vehicle. So those, just a handful of examples where the reverse angle parking does provide a lot of benefit. The nice part about the reverse angle, like I said, we're not necessarily losing a lot of parking, we're losing three spots. We're losing three spots mostly due to putting in, we got a, a mid-block crossing in here, and that's really where those, those parking stalls are being lost. If we got rid of that mid-block crossing, we would actually gain a couple parking spaces by having this reverse angle, and making some other changes in the corridor. So that, that is option one. Option two, very, very similar, would be putting a median down the center of High. There are some safety benefits that come along with potentially having a median down there, you provide a refuge point for pedestrians at that mid-block crossing. There's a place for them to stop and then pause and continue their, their walk across. It does reduce the number of sideswipe crashes that would happen in a, in a downtown situation. So there's a little bit of safety benefit that goes along with this option. But also, at the same time, it could be an aesthetic thing, right?
How much of your traffic lane you take up, you get like a wide load on the state highways?
Yeah, so that's, that's one thing that we have to be conscious of when we're laying this out, is making sure that we meet all the minimums in terms of widths for it being a state route and having some truck traffic come through here. Fortunately, like I said, we have such a wide corridor that we have a ton of flexibility in terms of, of laying this out to provide plenty of room for truck traffic, making truck turns, vehicles coming through the corridor.
I think we maintain 14 half-foot lanes, and then the Boulevard or the, you know, the center median would be 19.
This might be more of an Officer Frum question. Yeah. Are most of these accidents, when people back out, they're not paying attention to who's coming around the corner?
A lot more downtown, like trying to back out, because you can't see past the cars parked next to you, and you back out, and then the car just hits you. And then the car parking, backing out that far.
So then if I'm wanting to back, are people gonna pay attention when they see me backing up, wanting to back in the spot?
What's gonna be changed, but they're gonna have to pay attention when we're gonna take it.
Well, but will, but will they pay atten, will you have more rear ends because people aren't paying attention? And the people that cross lanes to park, which is technically legal, I've always heard, what's gonna happen?
People trying to. Like you're heading east and then wanna go across the other way, you can't do that, so.
Well, they do it all the time.
That's, the median, the median would, the median would actually help.
Well, we didn't have a median, is what with the rear parking.
Correct. I came from a community where we introduced the rear angle parking about six or seven years ago. Shoot, gosh, I'm really old, it was actually about 10 years ago, we introduced the rear angle parking. And we did it on two test streets in the downtown district. At first, we had the weirdest response, we had cars parking sideways in it, we had people pulling in, we had people backing in. But after, I'd say after the first six months, people got acclimated to it, and from what I observe on a daily basis, driving through our town, those are the most popular parking spots in our downtown district. I was joking with Mike, not really joking, but it's like, we have rear angle parking on like, say, two blocks here, and then we have a traditional pull-in, and then we have a street that has parallel parking, and then we go back to two blocks with rear angle. The consistency in our community is a little lackluster.
That's just a test field.
That's, it's, it's a tremendous test field, is what it is, but, but people, you know, say years later, people adapt to it, they know how to park into it. You pull up, you know, parallel to where you're going, pull in, you have to go on, you back in, people behind you know not to ride, ride behind you too close. But yeah.
I've seen people can't pull in without taking up two and a half spaces. They go to back, you don't park in one spot.
They'll parallel park in an angle if they're.
I mean, I know, it's doable.
No, absolutely, yeah.
I don't know.
I think my mom's, yeah, my mom's 79, she works around, and then just.
So no, they're, it's gotta come back to some enforcement, if people aren't doing it right. And people are just like the animal, or nothing, and everything else, but then getting forced, what's the sense of doing? What's the sense of having a council here, they don't do shit.
All right. One, one of the last things that, I don't know if Mike's going to touch on, with the Boulevard effect that, that we like here, it also provides the opportunity to, you know, potentially do aesthetic archways or, or something fancy down the road. You know, welcome to the Village of Hicksville, nice, nice ornament, you know, signage as you, as you come into town and all that stuff, so. Personally, that's why I like option two, it gives you access management with preventing the, you know, crossover delays, but also opens up opportunity for, you know, aesthetic features. Go ahead, Mike.
Absolutely, so, just to touch, one last thing on the reverse angle, when, when places have implemented the reverse angle, what they have seen is a 25 to 50% reduction in crashes. So there is a fairly large safety benefit tied to that. So between doing the reverse angle, and say if we did a new traffic signal, the benefits that we could get from there, we really would expect to see, you know, a pretty dramatic reduction in crashes that through the corridor. So then we'll, we'll touch lastly on the concept three. So we knew that, you know, the, the parking reverse angle might be met with, you know, some concerns, so we wanted to give one other option. To get as much parking in there as possible, but also have the safety benefit, so getting away from that pull-in parking. This option would be doing the parallel parking, very unique design where we maintain two travel lanes on the south side, or, you know, call it the south side of the, of the corridor. And then have a, essentially like a parking lane on the north side. So that parking lane, we would like to separate that a lot, we would put some concrete aprons there to, to really make it look more like a driveway versus like a through lane. So when you go through there, maybe have some aesthetic features, like maybe make it brick, something that really separates it from the standard lane of travel. So definitely a very unique take, but with that option, we were able to maintain. So, definitely a very unique take, but with that option, we were able to maintain seventy-eight parking stalls. So, when we look at these, all three of these options, we're losing just eight, just a few parking stalls within any of the options. Very pedestrian-friendly on this one as well. So, funding opportunities. So, there are two primary programs that we would look at, potentially first, going after one of these options, the first payment transportation's alternative program, which is a state-run program. It has an eighty percent, eighty-twenty match, so eighty percent towards construction. So, it does not pay for like the design right-of-way, those early preliminary phases, but it does pay for design, or construction, excuse me. Eighty percent of construction, typically, the awards are somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars. This is a program that opened up on October first and closes at, on November thirtieth. So, there is still time to apply. This transportation alternatives is really geared towards pedestrians, pedestrian safety, really downtown corridors like we're looking at here. So, that's not like half a million to a million, that's a decent-sized pot, the eighty-twenty is nice, but it's not going to pay for everything. So, to follow that up, you know, we would recommend going after some TAP money, pairing that with what is called the Highway and Safety Improvement Fund, safety funds. This is done twice a year in March and August. The pot of funds is much larger. You can apply for, depending on the project and depending on what's all in it, somewhere between two and five million dollars, which is with a ninety-ten match. With that ninety percent can be paid for design, right-of-way, all phases of project development, which is very unique. You're not going to find that with really any of the other state-run programs. So, that really makes that unique. And safety, if they see that maybe the TAP program has already put in some money, that definitely makes it look very appealing to them. And obviously, it appears on their statewide safety list, so it's a known issue, so that already gives it some priority points. So, very appealing, you could do the TAP, do the safety money, and then that still leaves options like OPWC to fill in gaps as well. So, really what we're looking for tonight is determined from Council one, is there any interest in this? Is there interest, but we want to make some modifications? Can we select, if we do want to move forward, which alternative does Council prefer? And if there is a preferred alternative, how do we want to make modifications, if we want to make modifications to it, and then get a preliminary estimate done? So, with that, I will open it up to questions. Yeah. What do you have?
So, one thing I have is like snow removal. The way we have it set up now is, you know, we do the streets and, you know, some of these really small spaces, I don't know how those would work for snow removal unless Cory would like to provide me...
Just remove it.
Well, where are you, where are you going to put it? You know, where's it all going to go? Because right now, it's set up where it's nice and wide, so we have it set in quarters. If we start to shrink some of these spaces, you're going to have to haul the snow off somewhere else, else on here, or you just kind of stack it up.
We can tell you now, we, it's enough snow, we just use a snow blower, we'll go down and blow it back to the truck and keep on going.
And then the sidewalks, are those going to shrink?
It kind of depends on the option, right? So, we have some flexibility there. That's what I'm talking, like, in terms of looking at detailed design, we have a lot of flexibility in terms of what we want to do there. I mean, with alternative one, we went to a nineteen-foot walk area, so we actually widened the sidewalks a little bit. A lot of times, what we see on these is we have a three or four-foot buffer area where there's really, it's just kind of a crossover area, and then you have usually like a utility corridor, so, or a curb lawn. So, you're going to put trees in, do any, put any of your utilities in there, so another kind of dead area, and then you would have like your formal sidewalk, your walking area. See, that's, I say nineteen feet, but, you know, the actual walking area is going to be a little smaller. It's going to be at least six foot wide.
You have to be concerned with all the vehicle backing up to, let's say, a curb that the back of the vehicle overhangs a lot more than the front of the vehicle.
That's what that three, that three-foot buffer typically will help alleviate...
So, it has a tailgate down on the track?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yep, that's why they put that. Otherwise, like, where we came from, where I came from, we put our treeline right up against the curb, back of the curb, and then we realized, like, people with tailgates or whatever, they were having that hindrance, and our trees were getting scarred up. So, then the easiest thing, you put a three-foot strip in there, now you have that buffer zone before your treeline or your utility corridor.
Because you like turn their light poles or trash cans, they're so close to the edge of the...
Right, absolutely.
And you've got to be careful, meter sensors go off in front of bumpers, so you're close to that something.
Right.
Your median down through the middle, like, do you have any breaks in it at all, like, to turn across to go to like the bank or the Huber, or is that not...
Once again, that's something that can be negotiated for the time. We put it through the whole corridor, we've recognized there's a couple of access points in there that might be really key. That's where some maybe public engagement comes in, like, at some point in time, you know, getting the public engaged and getting some feedback, if we do want to look at maybe putting a break in there, or maybe the median only goes half of the section of the corridor, so the design detail that could be worked out.
Yeah, we looked at that, actually, we were brainstorming that this morning in our conference room, we're sitting there trying to think where would be the best places, but then again, we'd like to find an option, find a concept that you guys are more married to, and then we'll start detailing it and getting those details worked out.
I'll over to her, too many people don't want terrible parking for her.
Are you saying option C is not your preferred?
I work at the school, I see people out, the kids out there, I see their parents trying to show them how to do it, and they run all the company. I'm not going to lie, I try to avoid them if at all possible.
Absolutely. Now, we actually, what is it, Brian up north has, similar to option C, they have...
By the courthouse there, the park seat, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, that's, one of our designers came up with that concept. And again, we wanted to present you guys with a couple of options, that way you guys can see the big picture, like, okay, we do have the room to be able to do something like that. But then again, that's pretty out there, that's, it's a new...
Is there any other towns near us that do the back reverse angle parking?
Give me a radius.
Fifty miles away?
Within fifty, I think Lima's within fifty miles, that's where I'm from.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're the community that has the mixed...
I know, somebody that I can ask them, they think that are doing it.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been to one of the accidents before, from the pharmacy. So, I backed in, and I was driving by, and they see me.
They used to park right down the center.
Right down?
Back in the model T days.
Really? Where they hitched the horses in. No, I want to say Brian is kind of Wild Wild West like that as well. We at least put like a little median to blockade the parking area from the drive-through, dragon lanes. Brian, I think they just had a couple of bollards, and that's about it, so it's pretty tight.
Because of the new safety standards and everything, do you have to stay within your parameters of these street plans, going back to what we currently have, finding and working within those plans?
Mayor, I love your question because I think that is, that is one of the things. I did take back your guys' feedback, trust me, you could ask Mike. I said, "They do not want rear angle, and they do not want parallel parking," and they're like, "Well, you know, that's what we're going to give them." So, but no, when ODOT is looking at the safety funding, they do, they do rank them, and those, right now, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are the only two options that they're allowing right now. So, we talked about it before, you can put in rear angle, as long as you don't go ham on your curbing, there's always an opportunity to re-strike it in the future.
Do you have any estimated cost for the design right-of-way?
So, we haven't prepared any of that yet because there's so much variation between the different options, that we wanted to get feedback first before we spent a bunch of time preparing estimates that got shut down, so. I mean, I've not prepared any of that.
The last thing, you said something about throwing in the traffic light at Brian and High Street, if the signal was more than, I'm assuming, I think it's not, but I know we talked about, it wasn't also the busy time of the year when, you know, all the ballgames were going on down Park Two.
Will they go to a four-way stop like Maple and High?
No, I mean, that's up to the village, but I just feel like putting a four-way stop at Maple and High during like school pickup and things like that, it's going to get so backed up.
I agree, but isn't that what we have to go with?
No, 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 he's just saying if you're looking to change the light, then you won't get the funding for all that.
Buy your own light.
Just from the light?
Just a signal.
And the wiring.
Which intersection are we talking about?
The one by McDonald's.
Maple and High.
It's going to get really tricky to try to take that, to keep a signal there with any sort of project.
Just for funding, or, I don't, you'd have to eliminate that to get the funding?
It's going to back up traffic both ways, like around five o'clock, during school pickup, during school drop-off.
It won't be a four-way stop, then you'd probably have...
Where are we at?
High Street would always be moving.
Do we do a roundabout right there?
I said that, they said, they, you guys relents me if I said that.
Would that be a two-way stop, like you have to stop on Maple and leave?
I have to look at different options. I just, I can tell you with certainty, if you, you know, we show a signal there, funding is going to shoot it down at some point in time. So, we could two-way stop, four-way stop, we could evaluate some sort of roundabout, I am concerned with the right-of-way, just with the, it gets really tough when you get in downtown areas where you have buildings that are really approaching the intersection, and there's some topography issues just with the way that McDonald's comes down, like, it would be really difficult. I know there's a lot of pavement there, but, I mean...
I just love the way it works right now. I don't want to change it.
I would like to hear from, like, business owners downtown, to kind of get their input.
Reason why they're here, eventually we can venture out.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we set up a meeting where they speak to the business owners and kind of get their input? I don't want, like, their parking to be affected by this. I know the village was really busy this past weekend, Huber had an event going on, and so I just want their input.
We have one store that wants to relocate already because...
Maybe this place could be a parking lot someday, downtown parking lot.
Sign me up.
I think it's a good idea, though, Tony, I think the impact it has, it's their parking, you know, with the residents, and, you know, a lot of people here. I know I am. I'm not as young as I used to be, I'm backing out of a spot, and you can't see people coming, and it's a hassle sometimes.
Anybody that lives in Hicksville knows, you look in the store window, so they can see where it's coming. That's how it's done.
I have a question. Didn't we re-strike downtown a few years ago, like, we repainted, it gave better visibility, and then somebody got honked off because we lost a few spots?
Not a few, we lost a lot.
That was almost two decades ago.
But you could see a whole heck of a lot. Yeah, you could see a whole lot better. But did we, did we lose that many on an average, I'm not talking like the Huber having an event or something going on downtown, just in, an average every day night, did we lose that many parking spots where we couldn't just re-strike to give better visibility?
No, we just, we upset some of the...
I thought you guys, it wasn't for me, I thought you guys lost like a lot of parking.
I think them too. I was on that, I was part of that, I mean, I'll be honest.
It was great, I was like, I could...
We lost a lot of parking.
And turning down here at High and, what is it?
No, right, right down here.
Yeah, you could see a whole lot better turning out of that intersection of a morning, leaving for work, because you have people that park, going to the gym, and you have to pull so far forward to see traffic coming through town.
But you change that angle so much to those areas, and you still have to be compliant with handicap zones, right-of-ways, looking out, right? We have to have, there's state codes when you, it's a state highway, right? So, you have to stay within their parameters, and that's, we did lose a lot of spots that way, and that's what the business owners, I'm a business owner downtown, but it affected the business district.
I agree with Tony, we as the council body should not be making this decision, we, the store owners up front should be making this decision.
You guys need to be informed, very transparent.
Yeah, right, but those people need to pay this decision.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. We can set something up where we can notify them, maybe we can all meet here, wire all something and go over all this and let them see it as well. So, I'm all for that.
That would be...
Now, we would also be piggybacking off when the state comes through to pay too.
Correct, correct.
Corey brings up a great point, when he approached this, we knew the timeline that ODOT's coming in. It's not that we're trying to ram, ram this through, however, that, you know, ODOT's going to be here sooner than later, what is it, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty?
Twenty-twenty.
It sounds like a long time away, but trust me, it'll go quick when you're dealing with the government. So, it'd be advantageous to go after, you know, the first, the TAP funds, as Mike had mentioned, so that we can stay on schedule, get those TAP funds secured, and then in March, when we go after the HSA IP, excuse me, funding. Then, we already have one application done, we'll submit in the second one, and your funding sources start lining up.
How long does a project like this take?
About that long, twenty-nine.
No, 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 I meant like, how long would, like, hinder driving downtown? How long is it going to affect business owners and...
It depends on how, how big of a magnitude of a project you want to do. I think originally, we had talked about going all the way down to the sub-base and building, rebuilding that road up. But if you say, "Hey, look, let's keep the roadway, the roadway, we did a couple of borings, we found that the roadway base is still pretty solid, let's just work on the curbs and the sidewalks and those features," then you can, you can stage it, and you can, it would have less impact, obviously. But it depends on how invested you guys want to get with this project. You know, we're willing to help you on any aspect of that, but it depends on how full go, you know, how much the village is, you know, willing to invest into the project, and that would kind of, it doesn't give you the answer. It could be anywhere from, I don't know, like, three months to, you know, to a whole summer, or maybe even longer to a year.
I mean, I've just seen projects like this result in businesses shutting down because they don't get the patronage.
Right, you lose...
Yeah, we're not big enough in the community to alter it in that way, so, especially with our pharmacy being right downtown, and, you know, a lot of our older people utilizing that pharmacy, we, I just don't want them to not have access, or have limited access for several months.
The other factor is it's a state, so, you know, obviously, it's a main corridor for all the vehicles coming through town and all that stuff, you want to be able to position it so that you're not losing that, that traffic from out of town or it's coming through, but then again, you want to be able to limit the amount of traffic going through there so your contractor can get the work done. You know, you don't want your contractor having to wait every two seconds because a semi's rolling through or something like that.
Do you guys also consider, like, if you did the median down through the middle, possibly changing the lighting from being on the sidewalks to down through the middle?
Hundred percent, yeah, we, yeah, we were looking at doing trees, and, you know, obviously, we're rolling into the holidays now, you could always do some decorative lighting throughout the middle and span it across the roadway. Well, I don't want to say that out loud in front of Mike because he'll get mad at me, but you can look at, you know, different, different options. Absolutely.
Nice presentation, well done, appreciate that.
Well, which one of your reasons here would come, we've got a lot of diesel pickup trucks in this town, with four doors, eight-foot beds, and unless they pull the right front tire up on the curb for two foot or so, they're sticking way out in the road.
Again, that's a great question. So, from what we found, these are similar to the ten-by-twenty parking spot, is what the stalls are. I think your question earlier about losing spaces, so our vehicles are getting larger, so we went from the minimum of, what was it, eight-by-sixteen, I think, at one point, and now our spaces are not, the minimum we designed for is ten-by-twenty. And so, we're giving you an adequate space. The larger bed trucks, they'll have a little bit of hangover, but the beautiful thing is, as you're pulling out of that parking spot, you're able to see who's coming this way, and you can get around his for a minute.
If we back in.
If you back in.
Do you guys have tutorial videos on how to do this?
ODOT does, because, no, hundred percent.
We're going to have to educate generations, myself included, I'm going to jump into that, I'm going to have to watch a video on how this works.
I'll have to check, and Mike may get a...
I'm backing in a spot like that, I'm going to have to watch a video.
No, they actually, when we did the program ten years ago, ODOT supplied, supplied our town with signage, so it gave you the three-step, you know, pull in front of it, just spot, turn on your turn signal, and, you know, signal back, you know, and all that stuff. So, they give you the signage, there's tutorials that we put on our website. There's tutorials that we put on our website and all that. So just like.
On that third option you guys gave, that was doing away with parking on the whole one side of the street?
Negative. It's actually doing three rows of parking. So you're, you're on the north side of the street, you're gonna have two rows of parallel. But that's a pass-through lane. It's not a drive lane. Yeah. And then, and then on the south end of the roadway, you'd have another strip of parallel. And again, that was concept, the concept of that was to maintain your eighty, your count of seventy-nine parking spots. So, yeah, it got, that one's out there, trust me.
That looks a little far out.
It is. And I, I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you, that, that the price tag on that one would be a little, little larger as well, so.
Did you consider farm equipment passing through when you designed these?
Yes. Yep, and, and once again, there, there are language that we have to adhere to in all these concepts. Adhere to that.
Any other questions?
Are there any concepts you guys want to throw off that they wouldn't just say, hey, don't even consider that one?
Well, the third one, now that you said, that's the costliest.
Otherwise, that's your front row.
No, it wasn't. Just pretend for the school.
There's no object.
Of course, that third one was for a lot of people, walking across to get to the business instead of parking and getting there, or was it cutting across the street to get to the business? The third option.
The third option would be to try to get those folks kind of away from the, the through lanes. Get them away from the travel lanes, put them in their own, like dedicated, almost drive lane. Very low speed, like you would make that where, you know, people only go on five or ten mile an hour through that section, to really reduce speeds. Like, like I said, it was really all around trying to keep as much parking as possible.
Thank you, gentlemen.
What, what can we do next for you guys to keep the ball rolling on this? Because again, we have the November 30th deadline before that TAP.
I'd like to see you get with the business owners, to send a letter out.
Could, could a letter go out?
Couple days.
Be ready so that we can have them here on the first council meeting of November? Is that too soon?
Please, when it happens.
Well, have your opinions, have, send the letter.
We could have it less formal. We don't have to have it at council meeting. We can, we can call like a, a public involvement meeting or something like that. Huber, typically when we do this, we'll have just like an open house. We'll set out some, some tables, we'll set out the options. We'll have some sticky notes out and say, write your comments, write your comments, give us your feedback, make it a little more informal, that way people can kind of come and go as they please.
I'll just deliver, I'll put it on time and deliver.
Okay. We'll get together and we'll set something up. Figure out a date and, yeah.
Soon.
Perfect.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a safe trip home.
A lot of bars in between here at eight-thirty, so.
I'm to Cheryl, just cool.
Hi, I'm here today to assist in cash summary. I have the police department hand report, and I have our annual police shot notice. I've already checked the job, and she has them available next week, not this week. Tuesday and Thursday. From nine to eight noon. This afternoon, you can call in and they'll start coming to you. Come on in.
Nine to noon.
Two to noon. Eight to noon.
The only officer, huh?
Yeah, he'll be here.
Listen for Cheryl.
Also, I have given you the budget. When I did the payroll one, I did my spreadsheet with the increase on it. We shall go into this one to be voted on at the next paper, and if you have any changes. If you have any changes, call me, especially if I messed up somebody's agrees.
Are we gonna be in that time period to have three full readings?
Yep. I went down there. And I also gave you the twelve pages of the budget, of the history behind it. And on the top, you should have this, which is our estimated resources. And if you notice, those are around the far right. And we're already having to make adjustments. Because we have to do this so far ahead, and we still have two months of revenue and expenses coming up. You can only guess. All we can do. So if you have any questions on that, call me. And lastly, you have, we're in twenty, twenty-five fifteen. Attached to it is my paper, submitted on the temp missions for funding. So if that doesn't make sense to you, call me.
That one, that one still needs fixed on the X. Station manager, the X TV station manager salary. It says paid salary, it hasn't listed, and it says annual salary, which is missing a zero, so.
That's like, that's right.
Thirteen hundred? Take that.
Sorry, don't. I'm out.
It's missing a three, it should be, yeah, thirteen-three instead of thirteen-hundred.
You're gonna want that three.
She's so culturally stupid, huh?
It's up here.
Here, doesn't.
I didn't see any of that.
It was, next page.
Cheryl, so we're not gonna discuss that. I need to put this one. I know I do. Cheryl, thank you for submitting those reports and everything, and the additional reports. We appreciate that. Any questions for Cheryl?
I seen it sticking out when you had your stuff spread out. No, I've got so many other things.
Had it all on the guest table.
Maybe I can.
Sure, this night, they're coming to talk with tomorrow. That's what Rob's, Rob's.
I'm at the school, sorry.
I can email it to you.
Tony gave me an extra. What are you doing at the school, a teacher?
Anything else before council this evening?
Hope, well, what'd you say?
Mayor's report. Oh, Mayor's report. I don't have anything except for trick-or-treating this weekend. October, Saturday is coming Saturday, four to six. Watch out for all the kids and the parents, and some streets get real busy out there. Take heed to that. A lot of the churches are doing the truck-or-trains, different organizations doing truck-or-trains. So check out different things happening in the community. Enjoy your weekend, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you all for coming and, and being very cordial.
I think much to adjourn.
We don't want to do anything before.
I, I mean, I could be here for two hours with the world stuff we just got tonight. I need more time than just, I mean.
Well, we didn't get everything we needed tonight.
So then why are we gonna have another session that we're gonna have?
Thursday.
We have a meeting on Thursday.
I want information before the meeting on Thursday. I mean, I want a, I want a contract, I want to make a contract.
Letter of intent.
We already have that.
No, no new ones?
Would you like to have a, a five-minute executive session?
We're only waiting on one portion of it.
We're gonna have a five-minute executive session, or somebody will second my motion.
I'll second that.
All right, let's do it.
There's no, there's no information.
If you all can stay with that.
Then we can go home.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
No.